Sun's in his eye. You don't mind the sun in your eyes? Good evening. The City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, chapter 40A, and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary will read the legal notice or state that such a notice has been waived. All applications will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the chair, and tonight we are going in order. The rest of this explains it in words that I'm going to just sort of put aside, and now I'm just going to tell you so you all can understand exactly how this runs in an easier form to understand. So, the secretary will read, tonight we start with number three. He'll read the legal notice, and then you, the petitioner, or your legal counsel, or your contractor, whoever you have representing you, will come up to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and then you're going to tell us why you're here. You're here for dimensional relief. Please keep that in mind. As you're telling us why you're here, some of the things we don't want to listen to are neighborhood tit-for-tat things like, "My neighbor keeps his spotlight on in the backyard till midnight." We don't want to hear any of that. We just want to hear why you're here. Then, the board will ask you some questions, if we have any questions. And then, I will say to the audience, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this petition? So if you have neighbors that think your farmer's porch is a great idea, and you're a wonderful neighbor, they'll come up, they'll state their name and address for the record, and they'll state why they are in favor of the petition, whatever it may be. And then I'll say, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? So let me explain that a little bit more. Once again, when you come up to speak in opposition, you have to tell us why you are opposed dimensionally for whatever your neighbor wants. Once again, not that their kids play the radio loud till 3:00 a.m., not that the leaves fall on your porch, and not that their new umbrella for the pool takes away your sunlight for your morning coffee. We don't care about it, and we hear it. At that point, we'll maybe ask some more questions. If you, or your lawyer, or your contractor have any concerns about what your neighbors said in opposition, then you, or whomever, can come back up and explain it, or talk about it. It doesn't look like we have many people tonight. Sometimes this place is full, and we could have 15 people that want to come up here and speak in opposition. I'm just going to go on the record for other people that are watching, that if there are a lot of people that are in opposition, all you have to do is, if the first eight people state what you're thinking, come up to the podium, say your name and address for the record, and just say, "I agree with the first eight people." Because it could get to be a long and tedious night otherwise. At that point, we will take a vote, for or against. Also, once everyone's done talking, and nobody wants to come back up again, and you remember something you said, don't shout it out from your seat, because we don't really appreciate that either. We give you plenty of time to say what you want to say, if you're here for that reason, and then that's it. So, at that point, we take a vote, for or against, and the decision then is typed and filed with the city clerk. Once the decision is filed with the city clerk, the 20-day appeal period begins. That includes weekends. You would go to Carla at some point, and she has everything written out explaining the 20-day appeal period. Carla is our wonderful clerk. One more thing, and I'm just going to do this really quickly. Please remember that this is an extremely fair zoning board. We are really, really fair. But you are here for a variance because of a hardship. And it's not that the zoning board feels that we don't want to allow you to do what you want to do on your land, but the zoning laws are quite clear. You're here for a variance, for dimensional relief, because what you want to do, you don't have enough property. So, it causes a hardship. And a hardship, the best one I can think of is, you want to build an addition because you have a growing family, or whatever, and you want to build it to the right side of your house, but the right side of your house has a brook. You can't. That's a hardship. So you have to build it on the left side, which you don't really have enough property, so you come to us for a variance. The other thing is, and it has happened many times, believe it or not, people can create on their property a hardship. So, that inability to build, we can figure out if it's a self-created hardship, and it won't get approved. So just keep in mind, and people that are new to this, discuss it with other people, because I'm sure people will ask you questions, just remember, you're here for a variance, dimensional relief, because of a hardship. And please don't go and think, "Well, the zoning board denied us because they won't let us do what we want on our property." That's not it. We have rules and regulations and laws that we have to abide by. So, with all that being said, we have the 20-day appeal period, and in compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded stenographically by our clerk. We are also on channel nine. When you come up to the microphone, speak clearly into the microphone, and make sure you tell us your name and address for the record. Now we will begin. Thank you.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is continued. So the second item on the agenda is a continued application, and there's a request for a continuance, a further continuance of agenda item number two. I'm going to read that into the record from attorney David Ankles. It's an email dated Tuesday, July 10th. Carla Davis Terrace, Silva Matter, will not have engineering report until next hearing date. Please continue accordingly. So, I believe we have to vote on that.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Alleva?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to want to number three.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 16th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Guy and Linda Ferranti, 8A Johnson Ave, Peabody, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017, as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 8A Johnson Ave, Peabody, map 102, lot 131. The petitioner seeks relief to the right side yard where 11 plus or minus feet are proposed and 15 feet are required. The property is located in an R1A zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the city clerk and board of appeals office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Thank you. Guy Ferranti, 8A Johnson Ave, my wife Linda, we're building a deck. Our hardship is a bulkhead to the existing area, and we're going to make it 10 by 16. That's pretty much it. Oh, I have two, I submitted two letters from both of my adjoining neighbors, saying that there was no issue at all with this.
Through the chair. Is the bulkhead already there?
Yes, the bulkhead is there.
Okay.
It says it's an open deck. Is there going to be any kind of roofing?
No awning.
Okay.
Nope. How would I get this tan?
Through the chair, if I could, to the petitioner. How big is the existing deck?
Right now, it's six by four. It's a little platform.
All right, thank you.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? Hearing none.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 16th, 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Brian and Janet Setcliff, 12 Scott Drive, Peabody, Mass., for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017, as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 12 Scott Drive, Peabody, map 4, lot 152. Petitioner seeking a variance to allow proposed addition and needs relief through side yard where 9.6 plus or minus feet is proposed and 20 feet is required. The property is located in R1 zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the city clerk and board of appeals office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Hi. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, Brian and Janet Setcliff. We're seeking relief to the left side of our yard. My parents are aging, and my wife and daughter and I are looking to move in, as well as my niece, and just looking to expand our family and have enough room for an addition.
Can you just state your full name for the record?
Benjamin Lozitis, sorry.
So, this little addition that you're proposing to put on your parents' house for you and your family to live in?
I'm sorry?
This addition that you want to put on?
Yes.
For you and your family to live in?
Yes.
With your parents?
Yes.
So you're going to have a little kitchen and a bathroom and everything?
No, just one kitchen. We are going to add a bathroom, but just one main kitchen, the existing kitchen.
Through the chair. You left the hardship blank. Is that intentional?
On the application?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did not submit it. I was submitting on behalf of my parents.
So you know that if there's no hardship, there's no vote?
We already had one variance. We just slightly adjusted. I'm confused.
My name is Dr. Brian Setcliff, 12 Scott Drive, Peabody. The house has three bedrooms. We've picked up my granddaughter, who's coming from an abusive home, and she's going to live with us. There's simply not enough bedrooms. I can't turn my granddaughter out, nor will I. So I'm pleading with you to allow the addition, because there are six people and three bedrooms.
On the opposite, is there a reason why you're picking this side of the property versus the other?
There's a garage over there. We can't go over it. The roof won't support it.
Okay. And what about to the rear, between the back of the dwelling and the pool?
There's a pool there.
Okay, and what's between the house and the pool?
About eight feet of land.
Yes.
Is there a reason? I'm looking at the plot plan that was submitted with the application.
Yes.
From the engineer, Chris Mello, and it seems like there's quite a bit of land between the existing pool and the right side of your property, if you're looking at it from the street.
Yeah, we're using some of that.
No, it doesn't look like you're using any of it, actually, from the footprint between the pool. Is there a reason why you can't extend beyond? I mean, I don't know what's on this back wall.
That's a kitchen and a bathroom.
But is there a reason why you wouldn't be able to?
Well, yeah, he said we couldn't do it.
You'd have to move the pool equipment.
Yes, right.
The pool equipment's like right here.
Okay.
It'd be a big end to gas line, a big engineering job.
And there's a gas line right there? Or is the pool heated?
Well, it's not heated, but the gas line coming into the house goes across there.
Can I interrupt?
Shouldn't it be coming from the street to your?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah?
Yeah, it does.
Sure.
Comes from, where's the garage?
This side, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it comes in the garage and goes in there. It feeds the kitchen.
Okay, so it's underground behind your house here. Okay, thanks.
Where we suggested he be built up.
There's a gas line there.
Saying it's coming out of the basement garage here and supporting it.
So, you're really, we don't want to turn you away on this, but I'm going to strongly suggest you try to restructure this addition. Try the hardest you can to maybe put it somewhere else, because, you know, my heart breaks. You know, I don't want to say, I really don't want to say anything like we can't approve this, because I feel what you're saying about your granddaughter, but there has to be a hardship. I know that if you maybe wait a month, you have a better understanding of what we're looking for, you know, tweak it just a little bit. Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, can I borrow this for one second? Back in November, you already approved this variance to the left side of the house. The only difference is, we're adding a story onto the existing, onto the addition, and going back four feet. You've already approved this in the hardship. Yes, in November?
We were here in November, and you approved this.
Yes.
And?
So the existing variance, we're not going anymore to the left side of the house.
If I may, I think what needs to happen here, in my opinion, is that this application should be resubmitted. It's an incomplete application. I don't, you know, if we approved the variance before, that's fine, but it should have noted that in the application, and there should be a hardship. You've got to have a hardship here. You can't put NA for hardship, because if we, we're going to set a bad precedent. If we vote on this...
I have to tie.
I don't even think we can vote on it. I don't think we should deny it either, because then it, you know, I think that the application's incomplete. My opinion would be, it should be withdrawn, resubmitted. The variance that has already been approved should be attached, so that we can consider that, and there should be some hardship stated, and then that way we can vote on that. And that way, we're not denying it, because if we deny it, then you can't come back next month. If we don't vote on it, you can resubmit.
And let me just say, I know you're not happy with this, but if you push the button, it will get denied. We're doing the best we can to help you.
I just, I guess I don't understand why it is denied.
Well, I'll give you, if you said you're going to build on the left-hand side...
I'm sorry?
If you were going to build on the left-hand side, and we approved that, and you decided to go to the right-hand side, it's a different application. If the last one was building on the left-hand side, and we approved it, and then you changed your mind to go to the right-hand side, it's a different application.
We're not building on the right-hand side. It's the same exact area.
Through the chair. So what we're saying is this, we're, you're not lawyers, we're not faulting you for this. What we have before us is your application showing us what you proposed to do. We see dozens, if not hundreds, of these. So we cannot recall what exactly your previous application said. You're telling us that, and we would have to believe you, but unless we see what you had previously submitted to, one second, unless we see what you had previously submitted to us, we can't just take your word for it, that this proposed addition is exactly the same as what it was before, whether it's to the right, to the left, to the rear, or wherever. We have to look at, this is a brand-new application, and since it's a brand-new application, there has to be a new hardship identified. And if you bring us what the old application was, we can look back and see, and maybe we see what the hardship was you argued at that time.
So I should submit the old application with the new application?
Again?
I should submit the old application with the new application?
With it, yes. So that way there, we have the benefit of seeing when you came before us, what the plans were then, so we can see what might be different now compared to then. And I'm not talking about personally, I'm talking about structurally. Because if it is identical, then it is what it is, and we'll take a look at it. But we can't do it without having an app, first, there's no hardship identified, as Kevin pointed out, and secondly, we just, it's an incomplete. We need to see what, you're referencing a prior variance. We need to see what that is.
And...
By the way, can I answer your question? You queried me before. Time is kind of of the essence. I know, but I'm just answering your question. His brother died, and left two children, bad age.
You know what? Believe me, I am the dean. But it's going to be written, and it isn't, and you can't just write it in now. So we meet, well, our next meeting is September 17th. We don't meet in August. Believe me when I tell you, we're giving you our very, very best advice.
Okay.
So we just change the hardship over.
Don't make it personal.
It's not a personal...
We can't give legal advice, but what I can say is, a lot of people think of hardship, and they think it's financial, or they think it's family hardship. That's not the kind of hardship that you get dimensional relief from. It has to do with the property.
Okay.
And that's all I can really say. But I will say that we need something there. We can't, and we shouldn't have last time, we can't vote on something where there's no hardship claimed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
You've got to, if you want to, you've got to request to have it withdrawn, and then we can vote on that.
Do you want to do that?
If you want to.
Thank you. I'd like to withdraw the request for a variance.
Okay. Move to withdraw this motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will see you in September. And any questions, you can just ask Carla, and she'll advise you, and if you need more advising, she'll tell you that.
She's very good, thank you. Thank you so much, Ward. Have a good evening.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 16th, 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of William DiMarci, care of Fred Lavasor, 256 East Main Street, Department B Georgetown, Mass., for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017, as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 2 Crossrip Ave, Peabody, map 44, lot 6. Petitioner seeking a variance to allow proposed addition and needs relief to the right side yard where four plus or minus feet is proposed and 35 feet is required. This property is located in an R1 zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the city clerk and board of appeals office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
My name is Fred Lavassa. I'm the builder for this project, and I guess I'm seeking a variance because the...
You guess you are, or you are?
I am. I'm seeking a variance because the homeowner is 89 years old, and he can't walk anymore, so I'm making them like a one-level living now. And their garage that they currently have doesn't go into the house, so literally they have to go outside. He's got to go up 18 set of stairs, and then into his home, and this is how these, and his wife is 85 years old. So now we're putting a carport on the right side of their house with a driveway, so they can get in. It's only one step to get in their home, instead of, you know, going through. Now they got another bathroom, they're going to get a handicap tub, you know, it's just all about handicap accessible for them. Makes life a lot easier for an 89-year-old man.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
For everybody involved, and I'm not making an example of you, maybe I am. So the 8A on the application is the place to put your hardship, and it's public record. So your answer was, the only place to put it. Well, next time, if you ever do this again, you know, it's a corner lot.
Yep.
It is the only place to put it, but the hardship basically is that it's a corner lot, and there's no room on the other side.
Okay.
So the only place to put it...
I'm sorry, it's my first one. I'm sorry, it's my first one.
Now you know, right?
Yes. I've been building for 25 years, and I've never had to do a variance. I've got lucky.
Through the chair. Is the other side a garage?
Yeah.
So you get a garage and a carport. Is that what you're telling us?
What'd you say?
A garage and a carport. The carport is what you need to be a variance for, right?
Yeah, they're not going to be using the carport anymore, I mean, the garage anymore. They're going to be coming in the other way.
So why can't you make that one level, then?
Make what? The garage is below the house.
True, but why can't you make it so that it isn't? As opposed to putting a carport on the right-hand side, redo the garage to be compliant and handicap accessible?
Because the garage is 10, 12 steps from the first floor. It'd be impossible unless I put an elevator in there.
Or fill, I don't know, I don't know the property, but there's, I'm just looking at the silhouette here of the house.
Yeah.
And why can't you bring in fill to bring it up to 10 feet, to be on the same level as the carport on the right-hand side? Is there a grade?
Because it's only 10 feet. You'd have to come for another variance. I mean, to fill the garage up with dirt, and then build another?
So my point is, is the problem with making the garage handicapped accessible, or is it the grade? Because, right, if it's 10, if the left-hand side of the house is 10 feet higher than the right-hand side of the house, that tells me the grade is 10 feet, slope.
Yeah.
Is that true?
I didn't measure it. I can't give you an accurate measurement, but I'm assuming it's 10 to 12 feet.
Well, that, that would be a hardship, wouldn't it?
That would be a hardship.
If there is a slope that you cannot put in a handicap accessible garage, or car, place to put your car.
Yeah.
If there's a slope, because the slope is too high.
Yeah.
So they can't use the existing garage, that might be a hardship.
Okay, well, that would be the case. I'm sorry.
Otherwise, a carport is, are we talking an enclosed structure?
Yeah, so they'll be out of the weather.
So it's not a carport, it's another garage.
Well, it's not closed in.
Didn't I just ask that? And he said yes. I asked, is the carport enclosed, and you said yes, and then you said no. So I don't know which isn't.
No, the carports are not enclosed, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't hear that. Closed or not closed carport?
It's not closed.
It's not closed.
So it's a...
I'm sorry, I don't have my hair in aids, I can't hear.
Okay, so can you hear me now? I feel like a commercial here. Okay. All I was saying was, you cannot, you need a variance because the elevation of your lot doesn't comply with the ability to have accessible handicap into the house. Okay, so there's a hardship. Then the second question was, where you plan to put this carport, is it enclosed or not enclosed?
It is not enclosed.
Okay. So it's getting a little closer, so I don't know if we need to withdraw that, as opposed to amend it. If his hardship is the slope of the land, that seems reasonable. Something we could vote on.
Through the chair. Is there a reason why the carport needs to be 34 feet wide?
Carport needs to be 34 feet wide?
No, is there a reason why, just that it's 34.3? It just seems like an awful big carport.
To be accessible for both cars... To be accessible for both cars to open both doors and have access to the door that's going in the side of the house, it's exactly the footage you're gonna need to get both cars in there, to be able to both, open both doors and not hit the walls with the car doors.
Through the chair, is this something that we can do administratively? Change the application to reflect what was said?
I just have a question. So there's two cars?
Yeah.
Two cars.
Yeah.
Did you just say that the people here are 85 and 90?
Yep.
And they're still driving?
Yeah.
God bless them, okay. Didn't know if there were other people we had to be concerned with. Go ahead.
All right, if that's the case, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Ask yet. Anybody in, did I say?
Oh, my God, I'm sorry.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition?
I moved to close the public hearing.
Now we need a motion. Call.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Number six.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals, City of Peabody, will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 16th, 7:00 PM, Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Matthew Melissa Nazaro, 31 Coolajav, Peabody, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017 as amended Section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 31 Coolajav, Peabody, Map 109, Lot 306. The petitioner is seeking a variance to allow proposed addition and needs relief to front yard where 12 plus or minus feet is proposed and 20 feet is required. The property is located in an R1A zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Hi, I'm Matt Nazaro, this is Melissa. We are 31 Coolajav, speaking for ourselves. We are looking to get a variance to do a bump out of our front house, of our house, to allow for my father, who is now with a walker, to get into the house. Right now, in a cape, when we open in our door, we have a little less than four feet, and it's very difficult for him to move into the house and actually get up and get in. And with our parents aging, both at 77, hers at 71, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so basically what we're doing is, we're trying to enlarge our front entry to allow my father, who is right now, I guess for lack of a better term, handicapped, and my mother, who is arthritic, and her parents, who are also elderly, looking into the future. Our plan is to have our parents move in with us, but we cannot do that yet, so the hardship is our actual front entry is too small. And so we're looking to just bump it out and make it more handicap accessible.
So you, obviously, taking out these front steps?
Yes.
Is this going to be like, like a foyer type, like a freeway or something?
Yes, it's a, it's a, just like a, yes, a front entryway.
Do you have front steps coming out of these also?
I'm gonna need to have steps, yeah.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? I can't hear him.
We, we know what, which matters upon right now going on.
Number six is 31 Coolajav.
Okay, we're all set, one second.
Anybody else in, has any questions, opposition? Okay.
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals, City of Peabody, will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 16th, 7:00 PM, Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Benjamin Hartley, 12 Herrick Road, Peabody, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017 as amended Section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 12 Herrick Road, Peabody, Map 32, Lot 19. Petitioners seeking a variance to allow proposed addition and needs relief to front yard where 20 plus or minus feet is proposed and 25 feet is required. The right side yard where 12.5 plus or minus feet are proposed and 20 feet are required. This property is located in an R1 zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, my name is Deborah Hartley. My parents live at 12 Herrick Road in West Peabody. And I am here tonight, my mom's 92 in August and my dad's 85, and want to put on a in-law apartment so I can move in and take care of them, put a two-car garage on. They've never had one in the winter, my mom's in a wheelchair, she cannot walk at all. She had a massive stroke two years ago, but with their aging and the winters are really rough with a two-car garage, and I'm putting a lift in the garage so that she can get in the home. The, the addition is the required footage, which is under 700 square feet, it's 690. I do have six letters from all the abutters. I did go and speak to every single one of them. The home on the right, Ian Conti, my parents have been friends with them for over 63 years, and she has no problem. And the neighbor across the street with the frontage and the one on the left, the people behind, everybody has signed a letter approving that I can help my parents with this addition to make their lives be more manageable for the rest of the time they're here.
Through the chair. And sorry if I missed this, but have you already applied to the City Council for the FALA? Or are you here to get the variance pending your application to the City Council for the FALA? I, it's never clear to me what there's, what people are supposed to do first.
You approve Carla that, correct? Was that?
Carla, you can speak.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I didn't mean to do that. Yes, ma'am.
We're just looking at the plan, just trying to see, how much, how many square feet is the livable space going to be?
690.
690.
Do you see it? Thank you.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition?
I would like to recuse myself from this vote. Thank you.
You can vote.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I'll make a motion to approve with the condition that this be brought to the building inspector for his final approval.
Roll call vote please, please.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you very much, have a good evening, all.
Number eight.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals, City of Peabody, will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 16th, at 7:00 PM, Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Seven Dearborn LTD Partnership, 55 Cambridge Parkway, Cambridge, Mass., care of attorney John Kelty, for a variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2017 as amended specifically Section 6.6.8, as it applies to the premises known as Seven Dearborn Road, Map 78, Lot 19, Peabody. Petitioner seeks variance for relief from certain provisions of the DDD Residential Overlay District, Section 668, as, as follows. Density of 33 units per acre rather than 20. Parking allowing 295 spaces rather than 315. Set pack from residentially zoned land of 68 feet rather than 100 feet. Max FAR of .87 rather than .5 in properties located in a DDD zoning district. Plan and application are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Is it my turn to have the button on? Good evening. My name is John Kelty, I'm an attorney, and I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. I appear this evening on behalf of Seven Dearborn Limited Partnership, a company with offices at 55 Cambridge Parkway, Cambridge, Massachusetts. Its general partner is Seven Dearborn Inc., whose chief officer and sole officer is Joseph A. O'Donnell of Belmont, Massachusetts. And they have owned this property for some 20-odd years, and they have recently lost a tenant who would be the only tenant in the building that is currently located on this site. And we're proposing a development of 180 luxury apartments on this site. They would be located in one building, as opposed to our neighbor who has 16 buildings, which is the Simpson Apartments that are located adjacent to us. We are proposing to build structured parking underneath portions of the unit. We are having all of the amenities that can be offered. We expect that when I speak to the issue of luxury apartments, we'll be at about $2,200 a month for, for our two-bedroom. One half of the units will be single, single-bedroom apartments. The other half will be two-bedroom. There will be no three-bedroom apartments located on the premises. We have asked for four variances, one seeking a density which would allow for 33 units per acre rather than 20. We're seeking a variance that would provide 295 spaces rather than 315. As part of the package that I submitted to you tonight, there is a version of that plan that you're looking at, and at the same time, there's a proof plan, which is evidence of the fact that we can make that parking requirement. We are firmly of the opinion, all of our studies suggest that we can, we can provide more landscaping, less impervious surface by providing 295 spaces. But that second plan that's in your package this evening demonstrates that we are capable of adding spaces both inside the garage and outside, which would create more impervious surface, but will not trigger the requirement of a variance from the impervious surface requirement. We have then also asked for a setback from residentially zoned land of 68 feet rather than 100. That 68 feet... And we are 68 feet from an undeveloped section of their property. The last variance we've requested is max, maximum FAR, floor area ratio of .87 rather than .5. We've had the opportunity to meet with the administration in the form of the mayor and also with Community Development Department. We have provided you with copies of the type and style of building. We are, we have hired Cube 3, who are the architects noted on the front sheet of that plan, and they have built a building called the Tremont, which is located in Burlington, Massachusetts, and has been entirely successful. And those are the, that is the type and style of building that will be built out on Dearborn Road, as opposed to the kind of wooden structures. It'll have some drivet material, drivet material, there'll be a lot of glass. It'll look slightly more modern and somewhat European, kind of urbanish, much more so than the apartments that are located immediately adjacent to this particular property. We have suggested to the Community Development Department that we have several more stops to make before we could begin construction. One is that we would need to come in with a landscape plan, and we would have that vetted by Community Development Department, presented to this board for a further variance, separate from what we're doing this evening, and we would ask to substitute that fully vetted landscape plan as our landscape on this property. We have to also go to the Conservation Commission, because there are some wetlands area that are down-slope, down-gradient between the ramp that connects to Route 128 to Route 1, and, and our higher elevated portions of the property. So we would need to file with the Conservation Commission. And then, if we were granted these four variances this evening, we would fully unleash Cube 1 and Peter Ogan from Haze Engineering to complete the, well, Peter would be completing the site plan, taking into account existing elevations and designing stormwater drainage. That would all be vetted by the Concom. And we would then, once that's all, once that's all drawn, we would likely be in your September meeting with the landscape plan, and we would be in an October. with the landscape plan, and we would be in an October for Community Development Authority approval. And our suggestion is that anything that this board may consider approving have a condition that says essentially, "The variance is subject to and contingent upon a complete approval by the Community Development Authority." This approval will include review of stormwater management, sewer and water, review of needs and availability by the Department of Public Services, and review of building materials, pricing for rentals, a complete traffic review, review of the landscape plan, which then would be submitted to you, and all aesthetics, including architecturals. If you were to grant this variance this evening, that would push us closer to being able to expend the type and style of money that's necessary to bring a project of this volume to fruition. We are immediately adjacent to 456 units that are located in the Highlands, and we would be spending essentially some $36 million on this particular project. And we would be four or five months developing the building plans, and we would probably be hopeful to be through the entire process by late 2018 for submission for building permits and plans all reviewed by CDA, and be in the fall of 2019. Good.
Two questions. No, a comment and a question. I'll ask my question first. So is there any... Or are you aware, or low-income? Some of these, like five of these units, have to be a low-income?
Yeah. We've had a discussion that we would need to be compliant with the inclusionary zoning. Yes.
And?
We would do so.
So the other thing I just have to say is this looks like a great project. This really does look like a great project. And I'm very happy about this. It looks great. My comment.
Through the chair, since I think I'm in a butter, I might have to recuse myself, but I'm not quite sure, because I'm on the other side of Route 1. But what are we doing about water, like water pressure?
We don't expect our preliminary meetings, we do not expect a difficult time with respect to water pressure, per se. There is a tank that we would be in our discussions with the mayor's office. We're going to be asked to participate in some sewer issues that are out on Route 1. We have a pump station that might need to be refitted at the end of Dearborn Road, at Dearborn and Farm Ave. If it would look and be better, and the Public Services Department were to recommend that we take our sewer directly out to Route 1, then that's something that we would be doing. And if there's any need for us to create any kind of pump station, which as a preliminary matter, I don't think that we're going to be asked for our potable water, we're not going to be asked to do that, but if we had to, we would.
So through the chair, I'm assuming, since I didn't get a notice, that Huntington Woods is not in a butter? Because the road goes between us? Oh, isn't that funny?
I mean, this sounds like a song.
River runs through it.
Through the chair, the river doesn't run through. And, you know, a body my size takes a long time to take a shower, because the water pressure where I am is less than best.
Don't make sure that water... Board. Here. On anybody in the...
Okay, well, okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, good. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Richard M. Medina. M-E-D-I-N-A. 1-B Laurel Street, South Peabody. For those who don't know where that is, that's across from Addys and Naluigis. Okay, I'm just trying to give you a little information, okay? The point is, why am I opposed to this? I have attended many council meetings and planning board meetings on zoning. And we went over zoning for three or four years. We talked about the whole city, and we considered my area and the whole city. This never came up. This was not an issue. It was zoned, and the planning board studied this zoning, they had hearings, and they voted on this zoning, and they approved the zoning. The city council, it was sent to the city council, and the city council studied this, got recommendations from the building board and the planning board and everybody else. And they, in their wisdom, voted for this zoning. So the petitioner is asking this board to undo what the planning board and the city council, the city solicitor, the building, the community development, in all their wisdom, voted for two or three years ago in this very room. Now, I know you're here to talk about the petitioner and his need. My understanding is that there has to be a hardship. Now, what is the hardship when you're in business? I can understand the residents coming in for a sideline. But when you're in business, I assume you look at the property and the zoning before you invest or think about developing it. I would assume that is a business procedure. Maybe I'm stupid, but I would think that that would be the right thing to do. Now, the zoning is very clear, and the reason for that zoning is very clear. They don't want the density of that area to be too dense. I understand, looking at my figures, from 33... 33 is per acre rather than 25. That's a 32% increase. That is not a slight increase. 32%? Who gets 32% raises? The parking. I come off Route 1. If I'm going to Brothers Cuchina, and I turn that corner, and that's where the development is going to be. I go a little further, and there's another development further down, and there's cars parked on the street. If you're going to have more units, you're going to have more parking, and where are these people going to park? If they have one or two cars per family, or sometimes three, or company, if they have company, where are they going to park? And I believe Northeast Nursery has a thing across the street with trucks entering and exiting. I think that's a safety issue that this board should look into. The setback, right on the road, Dearborn Street. Rather than sit back away from the street where it is now, you've got beautiful greenery, you barely see what's there, it's going to be right on the road. You're going to have a lot of congestion right in that particular spot. The issue of luxury apartments, that got me. I've lived in Peabody all my life. I've seen luxury apartments come and go. I remember when North Shore Center was going to be luxury apartments back in the '50s. I remember when Cross Keys was going to be luxury apartments. That term rings a bell for people who want to develop and say how wonderful it's going to be. But in time, the city pays the bill. And by the bill, I mean my taxes, right here. This is my tax bill. With increased people, fire, police, I get called. Schools have to be built. They're not guaranteeing no kids. You can't do that. And kids are a luxury. You know that as well as I do. So I'm concerned about the issue, where the hardship would be, not so much on the developer, but old people like me, and old people that've got to pay their taxes that are going up and up, and they're on fixed income. They may make $2,200 a month, but retirees aren't getting $2,200 a month. Water. You take that many people, that increase in people, where's the water? My water rates are going up, like everybody else, we're buying MBTA water, whatever that board is, and that's expensive water. Where's the water going to go, come from? The supply of water in Peabody is finite. And if we don't have the supply and the demand goes up, the law of supply and demand states that prices go up. So the more people, the more demand, the higher prices. And let's see what else I've got. I think I'm almost done here. Just in closing, speaking, getting back to density, my mind works crazy. You're trying to put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag in this development. You're trying to put a lot of people in a small area, and that creates problems in and of itself. These people may be luxury people, but they're people. So I'm going to close right now by saying, if you vote for this, this is a crime, to vote this. To vote against the will of the city council, the will of the planning board, the will of community development, and the will of the citizens of Peabody, who follow these issues. I wish there was a member of the city council here. I wish there was a member of city community development here, who all of this, or the planning board here. But I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Can you... Jack, can you just... Attorney Kelty, could you just address the density a bit?
We are proposing 180 units over our 5.5 acres of land, which would allow by right 110 units under the current zoning. We're seeking the 180 so that we can build structured parking, so that we can stay away from the more downgradient areas where we know there are some wetlands, and where we know we are going to need to provide stormwater management. And we are providing our units in a single L-shaped building, which will be five stories, with parking, structured parking beneath. And we have shown that we can provide the required parking if necessary without seeking a variance for impervious surface. And by comparison, there are 456 apartments in the Highlands, and they are in 16 buildings, as opposed to our 180, which will be in one building. So while we are seeking a variance, allowing 33 units per acre rather than 20, our density is very different from the Highland Apartments.
Attorney Kelty, do you have any idea how many acres Highlands at Dearborn have? That's not rhetorical, I don't know.
I think I have an assessors' map that might give us an indication. I think that they may be on... 39. 39. Maybe 12 acres? Probably closer to nine acres.
Anybody else? Roll call vote please.
I'm sorry, just... So is one of those conditions around the concern that the person had about water?
No. Oh, yes. One of the issues of the city of Peabody was water remediation.
I'm not talking environmental, I'm talking about pressure, water pressure.
Dan?
I'm going to say yes, because I don't think I have a conflict.
Yes.
Through the chair, just in case, can we get Julie's vote as well, if I'm determined to be in conflict?
Number nine.
Thank you very much.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 16th, 7:00 PM, at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Mills 58, care of Edward Greeley, 58 Pulaski Street, Peabody, for variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2011 as amended to section 11.5, as applies to the premises known as 58 Pulaski Street, map 53, lot 47, Peabody. Petitioner seeks variance to allow three proposed wall signs where zero are permitted, relief from seven proposed awning signs where two are permitted, and relief from the size of letters on the awnings where 16 inches are permitted and 30 inches are proposed. This property is located in an IL zoning district. The application and plan are available for review with the city clerk and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
My name is...
My name is Ed Greeley, recently a new owner of the formerly Mills at Pulaski, on 58 Pulaski Street. I am seeking a variance for the aesthetics to the property, and the hardship that I, that I guess we would claim would be a commercial hardship. And if you'd like me to explain, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Oh, sir, number... Where am I? 8A. You didn't write down that there's a hardship here, and you're going to have to think of one now, otherwise we can't approve this, because it's an incomplete application.
Okay. Can I provide you with one now? Commercial hardship.
The reason that we are going to allow this tonight this way is because we have done this to the prior person. In reality, we shouldn't hear anything that has NA for hardship.
Through the chair, I appreciate that, but could you explain the commercial hardship?
By a commercial hardship, what I mean is upon purchasing the property, it's owned strictly industrial. The only type of occupant that is allowed in the property is an occupant that has a junk dealer's license. I don't think it's any secret to the City of Peabody of the condition of the property. I don't think it's any secret to the City of Peabody, the type of clientele that happens to occupy the property. In the last two months, I have evicted approximately 50,000 square feet versus junk dealers' tenants, we'll call it. What I'm attempting to try to do is I'm attempting to try to clean the building up. In the course of trying to clean the building up, naturally, like any other business, you have to pay your bills, you have to pay your taxes, you have a mortgage. The only way for me to be able to efficiently be able to do that is you have to have tenants to help you run your business, run your property. So what I have been able to do over the last couple of months, and this is something that I've been working on, not in just the last 60 days, but over the last several months, because it was a purchase that was leading up to the last two months, is I've been bringing in new business owners, moving away from the junk and the commercial, and bringing in such tenants like Jovi Boutique. She runs a clothing boutique, a high-end clothing boutique. We have a cowork company that's like a co-share, real popular right now in Boston, that's moving in. We have Peabody's first licensed craft microbrewery that's going to be occupying the space. There's a salon that would like to occupy the space. We brought in jewelry, a jewelry person that wants to occupy the space. We were, as of a couple of months ago, we were down to about 15 tenants. Right now, we're almost at about 30. The issue that these tenants are having, and the head of community development was kind enough to take an invitation from me to come out and walk the property with me. He ended up bringing the mayor out with him. And one of the challenges to the property is, A, is the zoning, the allow, the allowance, and B, we have individuals that are trying to bring their business to this property, and they're struggling for what's called organic traffic. Organic traffic is simply location, location, location. Well, nobody knows that these people are there. I introduced the mayor and the head of development to this Genovia. You know, she's a woman originally from Melrose, lives in Peabody. She brought her business to Peabody, and she's tucked away in Building A, and she's struggling. She's struggling because nobody knows she's there. You know, I think when most people think of, you know, the Mills at Pulaski, they think of, you know, a couple of abandoned buildings, nothing but junk in it. So what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to run the business like any other business, downtown Peabody. I notice coming up here on Main Street, it says a liquor license available. It's a big sign. I'm more or less just trying to do the same thing. I'm trying to run this business like any other professional business would try to operate, and then I will only be as successful as the tenants occupying the space. So I'm trying to help the, you know, the Genovias and the Jared Sorenstines, and, you know, these other people that are trying to, and Paul, who is, you know, the Essex County brewer that's going to be in there. If I could just give them, and I'm not asking, I don't think I'm asking for a lot, just a nameplate on a sign that sits no bigger than five feet high, that would be semi-visible, you know, from the street, and then a series of awnings. And the awnings, if you look up at, along the Merrimack River up in Lawrence, Massachusetts, if you go to Lowell, you know, there really aren't that many mill buildings that have been renovated or remodeled that are bare. So all we're trying to do is, we're trying to clean it up, we're trying to treat it like a business, and, you know, I think one thing that we've done, and I'll just end with this, is, you know, 53-foot trailers were pulling in and out of there like hotcakes up until about two months ago. We had 26-foot box trucks pulling in and out of there like hotcakes, and vans, and there was, there was about three shipping and receiving companies that were in there, but those aren't the type of companies I want to occupy the building. I want to put an ice cream store in there. You know, I'd like to maybe be able to someday put a sandwich shop in there. You know, there's some, there's some really neat stuff that those buildings could do for not only myself and my family and the tenants, but for the City of Peabody, if we could get some help with that. So that's what I mean.
Thank you. That was an excellent, excellent explanation. Thank you.
Through the chair, I'm assuming there's already signs up, right, that are non-compliant with zoning, on the building themselves?
There are on, matter of fact, if you look, I don't know, I don't know, did anybody get that, these pages? Okay. What the, some of the tenants will do on a Saturday afternoon, when I'm not there, they'll put these floor signs out to try to let people know that where they are, who they are, and, but I'm, it's, personally, I can't stand them. And I know they need to make a living, and I don't mess with them now, but, I mean, you got purple signs, and red signs, and white signs, and fluorescent orange signs, and so they're doing anything they can. They hang and stuff out windows, and putting clothes lined up, so they're just trying to make a living. All I'm trying to do is like, make it really professional, really high-end. I don't want to tell them, no, you can't hang a sign out your window to try to make a buck on a Saturday afternoon.
Actually, that wasn't my question, but thanks for that. My question was, that I'm assuming, like a lot of different places that were approved signs in the past, is that it is the fact that the signs being requested is less offensive than the signs that are already there. So like on Route 1, they have giant billboards that, you know, flashlights, versus what zoning allows, which is something different. So my thing on whatever you want to do is, I'm assuming that there are signs, probably back into the 1800s, that are on the side of the building that doesn't meet zoning today. Is that true? I'm thinking it is, but you could tell me?
I, I mean, there's a blue awning over one of the left doors. I don't, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be withholding, but I'm not sure, a sign that goes back?
No, I, I'm thinking, knowing Pulaski Street, knowing these buildings, that painted on the side of the buildings was, you know, A.J. Lawrence, whatever, that is like 45 feet tall and 35 feet wide.
Okay. We have, yes, okay, I understand what you're talking about now. There is a banner hanging off of the side of the building on the corner. Yes is the answer.
Okay, so whatever you're asking for is less egregious than what's already there?
Oh, yeah, 100%.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
What I, my goal is, is to clean-cut awnings, replace all the overhead shipping doors, retail glass fronts, and some nameplates, and that's it.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition?
I'm not in opposition, I just have some questions.
Yep.
So I just, we came, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Kathy Wells from 22 Westview Circle. I'm a neighbor, so I can see from my yard directly to your property. I can see from my yard directly to the property. I don't see that big sign with A.C. Lawrence on there anymore. I look at that building every day, three-quarters of the year. But what, my bigger concern is, I love the idea of the awnings. I think that could be really nice if they're done right, but I'd like to know what color they're going to be, because I don't want to sit in my backyard and see, there's already bright orange there. I'd like to see it kind of blend and look professional, and, you know, if they were navy blue, or something that went well with the building, I would be okay with it. I'm not really keen on huge three-foot letters, maybe smaller letters that look a little bit more classy. You're looking for an upscale building. I think big, huge letters don't make something upscale. And as far as hardship and marketing, I own my own business, and I never, ever was allowed to have a sign on the building that I occupied for my business, and I had to work my tail off, but word of mouth, I had business for the last 24 years. So you can't just depend on signage to get, have these businesses have business. They have to work at it, they have to make calls, they have to do their own advertising. But I'm all for making the building look better, and, you know, making it more upscale. But I want it to be, to blend with the neighborhood, so that we're not going to be sitting on our porch feeling like we're in the middle of Main Street, because it's not Main Street, it's Pulaski Street, and it's, it's really more residential than it is. And my one other thing I wanted to bring up that doesn't have to do with this, is that we have not been receiving, I understand that Habitat for Humanity just went in there, and they skirted the zoning somehow by, I read this in the paper, and, like, I don't understand why we don't get...
That's not what we're here for right now, though.
Okay. So can, later on, can you?
You can, you can talk about it.
Okay, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else in opposition?
Hi, John Sermon, 53 Pulaski Street. I'm questioning the same thing, is that the height of, to let the sign, the letters be three feet, I don't think that, I think that's way too much for, to be an eyesore. So I would not want to, you know how it says they want to mend that so it'll be, they can put big letters there? I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of the awnings, and what he's doing for the building looks pretty good. I mean, some of the tenants that are in now, I mean, I'd like to know, what are the hours are going to be, are they going to be mixed hours? I mean, like I say...
But that's not what we're here for.
So you're just here for the sign and...
That's it.
As far as I'm concerned, what he said is fine, it's just that I don't want big letters to look like building blocks for, you know, children, you know, ABC. But other than that, I don't have a problem.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else in opposition?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. You don't have to, but would you be willing to make a concession on the sign height that you've proposed? You've proposed a 30 inches, as opposed to the 16 inches required. The two people we have tonight in opposition seem to only oppose that variance that you're seeking. Is that something that you would be willing to do, or do you really feel like you need the 30 inches? And if so, if you could just elaborate a little bit further, and then we'll, we'll close this thing.
The, the reason for the proposed height for the signage is, the, each of, approximately, and I don't even know that I have all that I, or all the tenants would need, like, we're already at about 30 tenants, we're at about 65% occupied. The way that I laid it out is to give myself 36 signs, and we already have about 30 business tenants. So each of the nameplates is, in actuality, it's only four inches high. So it's not like we're going to be putting these massive numbers or letters. Yeah, the letters, the letters are actually going to be only, because it's a business, all it is is a nameplate for the side of the building, and each business is only getting four inches. So it's, so it's, I would really appreciate if, and ultimately, like any commercial environment that you drive down, okay?
All right. We're talking about two different things. You're talking about huge nameplates, and we're not. We're talking about the awnings, right?
Chair, the awnings are currently allowed for, what, 15? I'll have to get, get my glasses out. No, they're allowed for 15, and they're asking for 30. They're asking wall signs to be two feet, where zero is allowed, and seven feet where two is allowed. So none of these numbers are particularly large in the, in the linear measurement of what we're asking for. But it's up to you guys.
I'm sorry, I thought that it was seven awnings, seven total awnings, not the size of the awnings. I thought it was seven awnings versus two awnings, not seven feet versus two feet. Is that, maybe I...
Awnings with graphics where seven are proposed and two are allowed. Awakening letter side where 30 inches are proposed and 16 inches are allowed.
But I guess the size of the letters, he doesn't even need a variance for, right? It's the, on the awnings. The awnings can be, so maybe I didn't understand the opposition. I thought that...
I'm thinking, and you guys can please correct us, you can have an awning, letters that are 16, and you're asking for 30. Awakening signs that says seven, I'm assuming that was inches.
It's, it's...
Or the number of signs.
It's the number seven. There's, there's seven doors throughout three buildings throughout the property, because in actuality, it's three buildings. So all I'm looking to attempt to try to do is put two awnings on each of the buildings, and there's one additional door that I want to put an awning over for the daycare, that is hopefully going to be allowed in. So seven awnings total.
Right, and if I may, through the chair, the building inspector's letter, when it talks about what the city's requirements are and why there's dimensional relief that's needed, it says setbacks for awning letters, 30 inches height when 16 inches are allowed. So my understanding was the two people that spoke in opposition earlier had a problem with the size of the letters on the awnings, not the nameplates, but the awnings. And they're both nodding their head. Well, you have to come up to the podium, please.
I was, I was just told he had a, Kathy Wells, 22 Westview Circle. I just was told he had a picture here, and that's what we wanted to find out was, our, what we understood was that there were going to be 30-inch letters on these awnings, and we're being told that that's not the case, that there'll be, there'll be a series of them. So that's what I want to kind of get clear, is how big are the letters going to be, and that the awnings are going to be black with silver? Is that what it's going to be? Because I mean, it was...
So let me, let me, let me just say something.
Okay.
Do you have something you can show your abutter right now?
The doors move from metal to glass. And they're really classy, 58, you'll see, 58 regular.
Okay. And then what about the signs, with the name signs, they're going to be off to the side of the doors?
Yeah, each of the awnings side, doors here, it's a name plate.
Okay.
So we get, each gets a four-inch name plate, and it's 32 inches wide, so it'll be like...
32 inches wide in the hall.
Yeah, it'll be like, it'll be, about this wide, and that, that tall, and there'll be a business name on it, part of the building.
And it'll be blend into the building?
Oh, absolutely.
And then all the other signage, everything else, will be off the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to clean it up, it's going to look really...
Yeah, it looks really good. That was, the way it was stated in this, it sounded like 30-inch letters, and we were picturing...
No, no.
Bright orange with 30-inch letters, so...
That'd be really classy.
Okay, no, it looks nice. Okay, thank you.
So did I hear the abutter saying that she's not concerned? Is that the testimony we're hearing?
And I just have a question that was brought up by the abutter. The awnings will be, and I know it has nothing to do with the zoning, but for whatever, they will be consistently the same? but for whatever, they will be consistently the same? They'll all be the same?
They're all gonna be the same color. It's gonna be, they're black awnings with metallic stainless steel 58 in the Mills through it, in white. It's gonna look really classy.
Now, the matter is now before the board. Do we close the public hearing? Let's do it.
They tried to earlier.
All right, okay, I messed it up, let's do it.
Motion to close the public hearing? Isn't that a good idea? Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Any opposed?
Second.
Thank you very.